I call to order the regular meeting of the San Marcos City Council. Today is Tuesday, August 15th of 2023. The time is 6:00 PM. Ms. Trevino, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Prather, Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Gleason, Mayor Houston.
Here.
Ms. Garza.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
And Mr. Mendoza.
Here.
We have a current present.
All right. This evening, our invocation is being given by Pastor Paul Record. Okay, of Victory Chapel Church. Thank you, we're glad you're here.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for this opportunity. Myself, as well as other pastors throughout this city, believe in the city council and its potential to lead this city for the good and growth of its citizens. As I pray, I read from the Book of Psalms, Chapter 25. "To you, O Lord, I lift up my soul; oh my God, I trust in you. Indeed, let no one who waits on you be ashamed. Show me your ways, O Lord; teach me your paths. Lead me in your truth and teach me; for you are the God of my salvation; on you I wait all the day. Keep my soul and deliver me; let me not be ashamed, for I put my trust in you. Let integrity and uprightness preserve me, for I wait on you." Lord, as we begin this evening, we seek your guidance and your leadership. We pray that you would lead the city council as it manages the government of this city. We pray for your favor upon San Marcos and the rest of Hayes County. Many of its citizens have been impacted, whether directly or indirectly, by this summer's heat and the fires that it has brought. We pray desperately for rain and a shift in the climate of this season and for strength for our fire departments and emergency response personnel. We pray for our children and our students returning to school this month, and we ask that you would give all of our teachers, faculty, and admin clarity, courage, and compassion. As this council deliberates and discusses the items on tonight's agenda, we pray for a spirit of unity and discernment, and that these officials make the best decisions possible that promote the potential of our city. As David prayed in Psalms 23, "Let integrity, good ethics, and uprightness preserve us all." In the name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
Amen. That's a good message. And please join me in the pledges of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. All right, next is our citizen comment time period. The city council welcomes speakers at work sessions and regular meetings. Persons wishing to speak during citizen comment or question and answer portion of a regular meeting may sign up online at samargustx.gov, Government, City Council, Citizen Comments, prior to noon. If you wish to speak online prior to noon, in order to give us the opportunity to send you a call-in number and a link. If you wish to speak in person, it's the same online, or you may sign up at the city clerk's office. Either way, the deadline is 5:45 PM the day of the meeting. Speakers may speak once during citizen comment time period and may not yield time to others. If you speak about a public hearing topic, we ask that you not repeat exactly the same comments again during the public hearing on the same topic. You'll have three minutes to speak. When you state your name, you have a timer displayed on the screen. You'll start in the green, and the countdown begins. When you have 20 seconds left, you'll see only the yellow, and when the time is up, you'll be shown that your time is up. The mayor and council will endeavor to ensure that meetings are conducted in a courteous manner and in an atmosphere free of defamation, intimidation, personal insults, profanity, or threats of violence. And this evening, we have our first speaker is Ruben Renteria.
I don't have a ticket.
If you're...
I don't have a ticket.
Oh, okay.
I'm here for later, so.
You're here for later, okay. All right, that's fine. We have Lisa Marie Capaletta, who is joining us remotely.
I don't see her online.
She's not online? Okay. Then that brings us to Mr. Maxfield Baker, who is in person.
Hey. Yeah, so first and foremost, everybody's heading back to school. Don't forget to get your COVID boosters. I just got my fourth shot today, quick and easy at HEB. I wanted to talk tonight about the Habitat Conservation Plan, which is on your agenda this evening. You know, this is a pretty perfunctory thing that we tend to do, so much so that it's on your consent agenda. But as we've talked about before, this is where Texas State and the city work together to manage our river, right? Part of that charge is recreation management. I do not see anything from this body that really pushes on that recreation management. And as an example of that, you know, Texas State being such a big partner in this and owning Sewell Park, they're near, as close as you can get to headwaters. You know, they have no signage, educational or otherwise, to tell people about, hey, don't pull that grass out of the river, because I've seen that happen, right? Like, I've been at the river and seen new students plucking stuff up, semi-adults, right? I've also never in my entire life seen any presence there from Texas State University to enforce the no glass bottles, no styrofoam. Every time I go there, I'll easily spend 30 minutes picking up trash, which is like Cayman Jack bottle tops and stuff. So not only are they in violation of glass and styrofoam, but they're also likely drinking underage and those kind of things as well. Get on it, Texas State, it's unacceptable. The only thing I've ever seen them enforce there is no dogs, which, come on, what a low-hanging fruit. Get out there and do some work, Texas State, and put up some signage to make sure your students know not to pull out an endangered species, which would be curious, what are the repercussions for pulling out wild rice, right? Like, maybe we need to make sure Texas State talks to their students about that. Are there... Is there a fine associated with that? It's endangered, right? The other thing that I wanted to jump to is, you know, I have been working with the police, the police chief, Stan Standridge, regarding a bunch of issues here in the community. I've written a lot of emails to staff and received unsatisfactory or straight-up just only responses from the chief instead of the chief's bosses, including Director Staff and Stephanie Reyes. One of the things that I think is urgently important for us to address and that I asked in my last email was, and this, and the reason I ask it, I'm going to talk quickly, is because when people get involved with criminal justice reform, one of their biggest concerns is cops running background checks on us unnecessarily and using that information against us. My question was related to, are officers doing that? Have they ever done that? Is that something we need to be worried about? I would appreciate a written response, because, you know, it being on the record is important, so that if you want us to go be justice advocates for you and make people trust, help people trust the cops, these are the kind of questions we have to address. I had a lot more to say about it, but Director Staff indicated he has an email coming to me this evening, so I'll release or leave some of those out. Last thing is, you all had an item about elections last time. There was no conversation about it. During the last election, Dunbar electricity went out, and the student center was inadequately staffed, so fix those in the upcoming election.
Next is our consent agenda. The following ordinances, resolutions, and other items numbered 1 through 16 may be acted upon by one motion. No separate discussion or action is necessary unless desired, in which case council members should pull that item from the list. And I am pulling items 5, 6, 8, and 14. I'm looking for a motion on the rest of them. Okay, I heard Mr. Scott first, but I'll give Mr. Mendoza the second, and so that would be 1 through 4, 7, 9 through 13, 15, and 16, correct? Is that correct, Ms. Trevino? Okay. So we'll vote on that?
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason, Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Sure.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
And Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Okay, and we'll address those items that were pulled after our public hearings. So Ms. Trevino, would you read item 17?
Receive a staff presentation holding a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance 2023-56, naming an unnamed street located between I-35 and Leah Avenue as Platinum Drive, including procedural provisions and provide an effective date, and consider approval of this 2023-56 on the first of two readings.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. This request is to name a street which was not previously named. As you can see on the map, we are in the area between Amazon and I-35, approximately a quarter mile north of the city's conference center. Next slide. Right-of-way was dedicated in this area in 2011, however, the road was not named on the plat, which is typically where that would happen. A portion of the right-of-way is paved and currently serves as access for a single business, PGM of Texas, who is the requister of this item. Next slide. PGM of Texas would like to change their address to make their business easier to find. They've indicated that their I-35 address is confusing and customers often miss their entrance. The only other property developed adjacent to this unnamed right-of-way is the U.S. Army Reserve Center, and they have provided a letter of support for the name change. Next slide. In reviewing the request, staff looked at the thoroughfare plan, which indicates this portion of right-of-way could eventually connect to Rattler Road, and considered Rattler as the proposed street name. But in discussions with other departments, we found there's no funding in the 10-year CIP for this connection, and additionally, the fire department supports the name Platinum, because the small portion being named Rattler could result in confusion for emergency responders. There was a question asked at Planning and Zoning Commission about whether the road could be renamed Rattler Road if at such time that road connects, as shown on the thoroughfare plan, and the answer to that is yes. We could go through a street name change similar to what we're doing right now in order to rename this portion of the street at that time. Next slide. This slide indicates the criteria provided in the Code of Ordinances for reviewing a street name change. There was a citizen comment at the Planning and Zoning Commission in relation to criteria two, which is consideration shall be given to historical and geographical significance. The commenter referenced an established nomenclature of the neighborhood, however, this area is not within a neighborhood, and there isn't an established nomenclature in the area. The staff finds the request meets the criteria, and on the next slide, you will see that we recommend approval, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request with a 9-0 vote. And I believe the applicant might be joining us online. He said he was going to be running a little late, but that concludes my presentation.
Motion to approve.
We need, I need a public hearing, but thank you for wanting to move the meeting along. I will open the public hearing on this item, and... Ms. Trevino, do we have...
We don't have Ms. Capaletta, but do you have Lee?
Well, let's go ahead and let him speak then. And he's got three minutes once he states his name and address.
He's on. Mr. Lee? There you go.
There we go. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi there, my name is Lee Colan. I reside at 632 Ridge Meadow Drive in Yerba Fools, Texas. I am a operations director at PGM of Texas in San Marcos, and I just wanted to thank you guys for allowing us to get this name established to where we can kind of create a more efficient business on our end. And kind of just a little backstory on what we do as PGM. We are a leader in catalytic converter recycling. We process those converters, and we get all the precious metals recycled back into the economy to make new vehicles and medical equipment and just things like that. So like I said, I just want to thank everyone for allowing us to be here and getting the name changed, and I just wanted to kind of leave the floor open for any kind of questions or concerns that anyone may have had. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. And no one else signed up, Ms. Trevino? Okay, then I will close the public hearing. Mr. Scott, now would be good.
That motion to approve.
All right, motion to approve from Mr. Scott, second from...
Second.
From Mr. Mendoza. I have one. Is this a street that the city already maintains?
The city actually does not maintain this street, as far as we can tell, but we should be, and we will.
That was my question. Are we acquiring a financial task when, by doing this? But if it is, it is.
When it was dedicated as right-of-way, we should have taken over maintenance of that.
All right. There may be no questions, and no further speakers. Ms. Trevino, let's vote.
Okay. Mr. Gleason, Mayor Houston.
Aye, yes.
Ms. Garza.
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
And Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Motion, pass it 620 with one X.
On to item 18.
Receive a staff presentation holding a public hearing to receive comments for or against resolution 2023-135R, approving a request by LJA Engineering on behalf of AutiBranch LLC, assigned case number AC-23-04, the ridge at High Branch Phase 2 and 3, for an alternative compliance to the maximum cut and fill in section 6.1.2.2 of the Land Development Code for a proposed residential subdivision generally located near Redwood Road between State Highway 123 and Old Bastrop Highway. Authorizing city staff to issue permits consistent with this resolution and declaring an effective date, and consider approval of resolution 2023-135R.
Okay. Wow, Mr. Reynosa.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Good evening, Richard Reynosa, Assistant Director of Engineering. This alternative compliance request is to our cut and fill standards, which limit cut and fill for development to four feet and allows staff to approve up to eight feet. The specific property is 23 acres, located along Redwood Road between State Highway 123 and Old Bastrop Highway. Next slide, please. The context of the development, it's primarily vacant right now, surrounded by vacant property as well as a senior living center and some residential properties, which is the Hills of Hayes subdivision to the upper portion of that map. Next slide, please. This is the concept plan for the development overall. The purple area towards Redwood Road is an apartment multifamily development, which is underway and in construction, and then the remainder is all residential, single-family development. Some of the site constraints on the next slide, some of the site constraints is, again, the cut and fill maximum limitations for development. The existing grades on the site vary from very as much as 70 feet from the highest point to the lowest point across the property, and some of the constraints as well is the infrastructure design. Designing roads and drainage limits how much they can do, that they can vary with the natural grades of the property. As we go to the next slide, you can see there, this is, this shows a little bit more clearly what the development plan is for the roads, the lots. The roads are situated there. The color coding is the areas of cut and fill that are greater than eight feet. The primarily bluish graded color is the fill areas over eight feet, and then the red areas are the cuts that exceed eight feet. And the specific request is to cut, allow the development to cut up to 22 feet and fill to 18 feet. Next slide, please. This exhibit gives you the overall grading plan, and in those specific areas, you see three detention ponds. And so those are the primary improvements that are being developed in those areas, three detention ponds, as well as the roadway along the cross of the top of the property. And again, the design constraints for the drainage and this roadway dictate the need to cut and fill to these extents. Next exhibit, please. Next slide. Here, I don't expect you to read all these elevations, but these are a blow-up image of these areas and points of elevation. If you look, if you could look closer, you would see point elevations, which in the cut area get up to 22 feet, and in the fill area get up to 17 feet or 18 feet. If you look at a weighted average across this, it's a cut, it's a cut of less than 12 feet and a fill of less than 11 feet. So there's, you know, on this map, there's a few points that are up to that 22-foot, but if you look at it, again, you look at a weighted average, it's under 12 feet, it's under 11 feet. A majority of the area is not being cut to 22-foot. This, again, this is a residential subdivision, it's not an industrial development that's looking to build a big box where you typically see like a large cut across the property. They are, they are working with the natural grades of the land, but there are areas, you know, with the detention ponds that require these cut and fill standards. Next slide, please. This item is required and did go to P&amp;Z in May of this year. The discussion during P&amp;Z had included two residents that spoke out. The two residents were from Hills of Hayes subdivision. Their primary concerns were related to their drainage issues, the city project, which at the time they had not been updated on its status, and concerns of a resolution of their drainage issues. So following that meeting, there has been a neighborhood meeting with the Hills of Hayes in June, and construction of the city project has begun as of this month. So that project is underway. They are addressing the drainage within the subdivision. It includes curbs and some driveway reconstruction, curb inlets, storm sewer infrastructure to route the drainage more efficiently to ponds and the outfall locations, and so that is underway. Additionally, the commission expressed some concern of the existing proposed drainage patterns. The existing drainage patterns includes approximately five acres from this residential development that drains towards the Hills of Hayes subdivision, and about 15 acres of off-site flows that also drain to the Hills of Hayes drainage. When this development, the specific development was coming through the city for annexation and zoning, that was a topic of discussion, and this development, along with the Hills of Hayes city project, committed to intercepting those 20 acres of flows and routing them around the Hills of Hayes subdivision. So the city project is routing the 15 acres to this development, and then this development is committed to routing that drainage around the Hills of Hayes subdivision and downstream. So that's a coordinated effort and a key component to this development, the city project, providing some drainage relief to the Hills of Hayes subdivision. With that, the Planning and Zoning did recommend denial of this request. It is a recommendation, it's not, it wasn't a denial action, and so with, so the consideration here includes that recommendation, but does not require a supermajority vote for that. With that, staff recommends approval of the request of the maximum cut to 22 feet and fill to 18 feet. I'm available for any questions, and there's also representatives from the development as well.
Okay, and I will now open the public hearing and ask, we have Ruben Renteria, did you want to speak?
No, no, not on the page.
Okay.
No, I'm picking on that, I'm fighting.
Okay. All right. Still, no, Ms. Capaletta? Okay. And then we will, Mr. Baker has signed up to speak, and then anyone else who's in chambers can come up and speak after Mr. Baker.
Hi, Maxfield Baker, 314 Shady Lane, San Marcos, Texas. Just to clarify, and I hope someone on council carries this question forward, if it sounded like Mr. Reynosa was suggesting that the city, when they saw what a bind this was going to put, the Hills of Hayes, met with the developer and agreed to say, you're going to deal with this 15 acres of extra water that's flowing off of this property. My question is, after the engineering is done, who is accountable for ensuring that that happens? Thank you, Mayor. Because as we've always seen with flooding in our town, it's really difficult to actually hold people accountable to it. It's really easy to just point up at the sky and say, you know, it was an unforeseen event, but our community is tired of hearing unforeseen events when people ask questions like these during citizen comment. So we know that we can rely to a certain extent on engineering, but water is one of the most powerful forces on earth and acts in really unpredictable ways. As some of you know, we've voted in the past based off of what engineering suggested would be okay and been wrong, right? So models change, and I know we do our best to stay, you know, ahead of, you know, the different modelings, but we don't, we, even before I got elected, Mr. James Bryan Jr. would talk to me about the Hills of Hayes and how it's always had flooding. I'm glad to hear that they're getting some relief to that with this project, and typically that's one of the reasons council will approve these things, is because it typically will help the area, but again, just make sure. Thank you.
Okay. Sir, we don't have public comment during the non-consent part of the, I'm sorry, during the consent part of the agenda. If you wish to speak on this topic, does this have anything to do with what you're...
Not, not...
Not even close? Okay. All right, thank you. Okay. Yeah, I'll have to figure that out. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Hello, Priscilla Flores, 13604 Tavoli Gardens, Live Oak, Texas. I represent LJA Engineering, so I'm here to answer any questions that you may have in regards to the cut and fill request.
Your name again, please?
Priscilla Flores.
Flores, okay. Yeah, during our discussion, we may call you back. Anyone else? All right, then I will close the public hearing, and I await a motion.
Motion to approve.
Segments for discussion.
To get on the table, okay. Motion from Mr. Scott and seconded from Mr. Mendoza, and... I will go ahead and ask, it's going to be at least close to the question that Mr. Baker was asking, which I already had in my notes. Mr. Reynosa, you said that during some conversations, some things changed. What, what is going to change to, and Ms. Flores, no offense, but I've been doing this a long time, to ensure that they're going to change their plans? Or have they already changed their plans and filed that with the city?
The plans that we currently have and have had since they started permitting include the drainage conveyance of those flows. So it's nothing that needed to be changed. They've included those plans for the drainage improvements to route that drainage.
Okay. I'm sorry, I had understood that conversations had ensued since this was seen at Planning and Zoning Commission. And then what is the, I'm going to say the word guarantee, that that's going to work?
So again, there's engineering behind it. So the way the existing drainage works right now is that those flows are routed through the Hills of Hayes subdivision, you know? And so we're doing some improvements within Hills of Hayes that is supporting and trying to relieve some of the internal drainage issues. Routing these flows is just going to help relieve that, you know? So if, you know, if we take those flows offline and going through the subdivision, that's inherently going to improve the situation. Is it, is it going to go to the extent that's been engineered? That's what we would expect, but inherently, routing drainage around the subdivision is going to improve the conditions that currently exist.
Okay, you mentioned the five acres, you said five acres and 15 acres. Could you just state that part again? What about the five?
So the five acres are, is what's within this residential subdivision? That, you know, if you look again at that exhibit, you know, the arm or what you have behind...
That they were already having to take care of, correct?
Right, there's five acres from this development that's already draining through towards Hills of Hayes. Hills of Hayes has been trying to manage just those existing undeveloped flows, and so, and then there's 15 acres of off-site flows. And so combined 20 acres are what's being collected, intercepted, before entering the Hills of Hayes subdivision and routing around the subdivision.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Hernandez, since you're here, notices were sent to the same folks, and so I'm looking at it as a good thing that there's no one here from Hills of Hayes to, to bring things to our attention.
It was notified during the P&amp;Z, and then we had to re-notify because of the time. So they were notified twice.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I didn't get to watch the P&amp;Z meeting. I just see in our packet that it was voted 7-0 down. What was like the summary of that? Or just, you know, what was the sentiment of the...
Again, it was primarily the residents bringing up concerns of their subdivision. There's also some statements along any request of cut and fill, there's just concerns of granting or approving any request of cut and fill. So it wasn't necessarily specific to a development, it was kind of a developments in general.
And when planning... And when planning and zoning votes something down, it requires a supermajority of the council to approve, is that, or no?
They didn't deny it, they just didn't approve it.
Yeah.
So it's four.
Oh, I'm incorrect, I'm sorry.
If they had denied it, then it would require six, correct?
Well, it said recommended denial with seven, zero vote, but you were saying it's not a rec, it's not like a.
Was that a vote to deny, or just not a vote on a yes?
The alternative compliance request goes to city council, but it requires to go to P and Z for a recommendation to city council. And so it's not an action that they're denying and that you're hearing.
It's not an appeal.
Right.
It's not an appeal, it's just, they did weigh in on it, though, that's all.
And their weighing in was to deny it? Mm-hmm. Per the packet? Or just to say no? Okay. I asked the same question earlier.
Anything else?
My concern in that area in particular is the traffic impact. What do we have in that regard? We're putting another neighborhood where neighborhood is, right?
It doesn't, it doesn't cut through to Hills of Hayes, does it? This is all hardwood?
So that's not going to have any issue with their surroundings?
There's no, no connection to the Hills of Hayes subdivision.
That's what I'm concerned about.
Good, good point if it did. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Anybody down here?
I have a question, Mayor.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you. During that meeting y'all had with P and Z, did the residents understand the difference between the denial and just saying no?
That's a good question.
I wouldn't say that they were concerned about the denial or their approval. They were concerned about their drainage, their issues. Where was the city's project to address those issues? What's the status of that?
I'm just worried, because after a while, people get tired of coming to meetings. They think it's all over after planning and zoning, but usually it's not. Just wanted your input on that.
In that meeting, they expressed they did understand, understand better what was being done. And then, like I mentioned, we've had a public meeting for the city project in June, and now they've seen those improvements coming into place, so I think they're seeing that action.
And that project is underway or imminent?
It started this month.
Okay.
I have a question.
So at least they know that they're not waiting years for that project to start? So that's good. Ms. Garza.
In the packet, y'all state the commission's concerns included some confusion of the existing drainage pattern. They felt there was a lack of information between the home builder and the neighborhood. Did you guys present, did they see what y'all presented to us today?
We added some more information and some additional explanation based on that discussion.
Okay.
Any more questions? Are y'all ready to vote? Yeah, when I, I watch the P and Z meeting, I'm just going, oh, no, but it looks like some really good things have happened in the meantime, so, thank you. They, they've had drainage problems for a long time, and they hear that something's coming, and I'd be down here in citizen comment, too, so. Okay, are we ready to vote? Mr. Vina.
Mayor Houston.
I'm going to be a yes.
Ms. Garza?
No.
Mr. Gonzalez?
No.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Prater?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
And Mr. Gleason is absent, so the motion passes four to two with one absent.
Okay. Counsel, we are now back to the items that I pulled from the agenda, and let's start with item five.
Consider approval of Resolution 2023-123R, approving agreement for the provision of services in connection with the proposed owner requested annexation in case number AN-23-09 of an approximately 1.8 acre tract of land out of the Andrew Mitchell survey in Guadalupe County and the Charles Henderson survey in Hayes County, Texas, generally located east of the intersection between Love Lady Lane and State Highway 123, authorizing city manager or her designate to execute said agreement on behalf of the city, setting a state date for a public hearing concerning the proposed annexation of said tract of land and declare an effective date.
Okay, this is not a public hearing, so I'm looking to see if there is a motion on this item, and then I've got some questions to ask.
Motion to approve for discussion.
For discussion, okay. Yes, from Mr. Mendoza, and a second from Mr. Scott. My major question was about access to this particular tract and what it is, because on, if you look at Google Maps, it looks like Horace Howard Road goes, wait a minute, this is this one, right?
Right, we're on item.
I'm sorry, wrong one. Wrong one. That's coming in a moment. This one, I just wanted an explanation for folks to understand what this is all about.
Yes, ma'am, and if we could go to the next slide in the presentation, this right-of-way annexation is adjacent to a recently annexed piece of property that we had at the time called Sedona North. As we were going through the plating process with the applicant, we realized that we actually need more right-of-way on this particular roadway. So in order to not have confusion with who maintains that future roadway, we are just annexing that additional right-of-way that's part of the plat to bring it into city limits and clarify maintenance for the future.
Okay. We normally do not have people speak during these items. But because you told me you were going to speak later, and I did not clarify that with you, I would make an exception in this case and allow you to speak now, what should have been at citizen comment.
I'll make the speech, but I don't need to.
Sir, we need to wait until you're at the podium, and we'll need your name, please. And next time, I will ask people what they were going to be working on.
My name is Ruben Renteria, we're Ben-McGinn, Ben-Corrie, and we represent the developer. Basically, what we're doing is that part of the review project for the Sedona North development, they requested additional right-of-way on the 100-foot, so we ask for an annexation for that additional right-of-way in order to accommodate that 90-foot right-of-way. That's the purpose of it.
Thank you very much. Okay, counsel, are there any questions on this one? Let's vote, Mr. Vina.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Sorry, Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prater.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason, and Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Okay, next item is item six.
Consider approval of Resolution 2023-124R, approving agreement for the provision of services in connection with the proposed owner requested annexation in case number AN-23-10 of approximately 25.55 acres of land out of the LSE survey abstract 509 and the JR King survey abstract 270, including adjacent right-of-way in Hayes County, Texas, located at 1913, 913 Horsepower Drive. Authorize city manager or her designate to execute said agreement on behalf of the city, setting a date for a public hearing concerning the proposed annexation of said tract of land and declare an effective date.
Okay. Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve for discussion.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded from Mr. Mendoza. I'm sorry, Ms. Hernandez, now is when my, my question about access, because if you go to Google Maps, it looks like Horace Howard makes a loop, but if you look at it on the ground, it doesn't. And I've talked to some folks out there, and it doesn't, so I'm not sure. So anyway, access to this tract.
So the really quick answer is we don't have the exact details of their access, and that would come during the plating process. So there are a variety of ways that they could get easements, get right-of-way, but a couple of points. Horace Howard is public only for a certain portion, not in this area. So once you start making that loop around, it becomes private. There are gates, it's, it's very private. But the master school, which is the gray rectangle that's showing on the map adjacent to the subject property, has dedicated right-of-way around the outside. So there is right-of-way frontage on the northern part of this property adjacent to that subject property. And what, when you're driving down the street, looks like the driveway into the master school is actually within right-of-way and would and could be improved as a public street.
All right, that resolves a lot of my questions, so this is good to know.
Oh, and I did have a note to say that any infrastructure improvements are, in general, for new developments at the expense of that developer.
Right. So I still have some serious reservations about this project, but those are more for when the zoning comes in. So, questions, concerns? And we will hear both of those at the same time. And if the zoning fails, might, might not, any zoning could fail at any time. But if it did, then they'd be able to pull their annexation request if they choose to.
Typically, we have direction from city council at first reading, and if an applicant's going to withdraw, they do between first and second. So we don't end up with property that's annexed and not zoned.
And they're not, yeah, it's not happening. Okay, counsel, let's vote.
Ms. Garza. Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prater. Mr. Scott.
Aye.
And Mr. Gleason, and Mayor Houston.
I'll vote aye to see what the next stage is.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right, thank you. Item eight.
Consider approval of Resolution 2023-126R, approving amendments to an inter-local cooperation agreement with Texas State University for the implementation of habitat improvement measures associated with Edwards Aquifer Habitat Conservation Plan, authorize the city manager or designate to execute the re-estated and amended agreement and declare an effective date.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion. I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mendoza. And the reason why I pulled this is because, as you know, this area generates a lot of interest. And I've been seeing a lot of comments lately about that floating mat of vegetation and with the river low. So people may be thinking this is going to solve it, or not wanting it to solve it. And I just thought, before more rumors get out there, if we could just have an explanation. You put a lot of information on the message board for us, but if you could address that, please.
Sure, and afternoon counsel and mayor, I'm Mark Enders, I'm the Habitat Conservation Plan Manager, so it's good to be here with you. I can try to answer your questions. Some of that does pertain to this ILA. You know, certainly the flow in the river right now is lower than we have seen in probably 25 or 30 years. And probably the duration that the river has been this low has probably been since the 1950s, since we've seen like a sustained low-flow condition on the river. So that has a lot to do with what you're seeing in the river as far as emergent vegetation. You know, a lot of it's Texas wild rice and endangered species. We're trying to protect through this habitat conservation plan. But it's also other vegetation that basically is, the banks of the river become dewatered and shallower, different kind of vegetation grows on the margins of the river. The Texas wild rice essentially sticks its head above the water level and becomes emergent. As it does that, you know, you have flow that's carrying down debris and other floating aquatic vegetation that becomes entangled on that Texas wild rice. So it causes what I would call just floating vegetation mats. And so there are measures in the HCP and part of this ILA for Texas State and the Meadows Center staff to basically come in regularly and kind of help dislodge some of those floating vegetation mats, primarily to prevent negative impacts to some of the endangered species we're trying to protect.
Okay. So any other questions by anyone else? I wanted a public explanation for this before the rumors started, either one way or the other.
I just have a question. Just wanted to address what Mr. Baker said earlier with the commentary. I don't know if right now is the right time to do it, but about like the signage and the wild rice and all that. I thought we already had that discussion with them, where we were telling them to increase like public education. Did we not have that conversation?
We have had some conversation with Texas State, and we're actually going to be talking with them at our upcoming meeting as well. So we are going to talk with them about this area. I know that President Dampis has gotten some correspondence from people who have been looking at the Falls area in particular, and is asking for us to have that conversation as well. So that is something we'll be talking about with Texas State and seeing what kind of education we can have. Also with our Parks and Rec, they're wanting to do some education as well. So it is something that we're looking at on a, on a wider level.
Okay, great, and this is just for later. Could y'all just like maybe shoot me an email with the estimate, like timeframe when we had those conversations? Because I remember them talking a big game about education. So that would be helpful for me to go back and see that meeting. I tried to, I tried to look for it earlier, but I didn't have luck.
Yeah, I believe that there was something about, is it the 1100 class that students have to take, that there's information about the river?
General studies.
Yeah, so that's good. I would think that any signage might be good if it's kind of similar, and certainly couldn't be contradictory. But that's how we can work on that with them. And surely part of habitat conservation is making sure that there's no styrofoam and other crud in the water. So if you could let us know what the end result is?
Yes.
Of that conversation, that would be helpful.
And we do send, you know, the follow-up notes, so we can, we'll do that, but then also.
Maybe a little more detail on this one.
Okay, and then Ms. Garza, also, we'll send you the information about when it was discussed prior.
Okay. All righty then, all right, thank you so much.
My pleasure.
And we'll vote, Mr. Vina.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prater.
Abstained and up due to my wife's employment at Texas State.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
And Mr. Gleason, and Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye, I'm just going to hold them to that education piece, because, I mean, they're a university, so.
Education is kind of their thing.
You'd hope, yeah.
Mr. Vina, what was our final?
Oh, yes, it's five to zero with one absent and one abstained.
Five to zero to one, to one. Okay, that's wonderful, and item 14.
Consider approval of Resolution 2023-132R, approving an inter-local agreement with the Capital Area Council of Governments, CAPCOG, related to a grant for household hazardous waste drop-off facility equipment in the amount of $25,000, with a match of $25,000 of city funds and declare an effective date.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve for discussion, yes, ma'am.
I've got, give that to Mr. Mendoza, seconded to Mr. Scott. Mr. Carr is here to explain, what in the heck is this piece of equipment that's going to cost that much money? I did read the message board. And it sounds like a great piece of equipment. If that's what it costs, I guess that's what it's, but if you would enlighten all of us.
You bet. Greg Carr, Director of Neighborhood Enhancement. So this is basically, so right now, when we get a paint can, one gallon, five gallon, take the lid off, drain it into 55-gallon drum, scrape it out. We cannot crush aerosol cans or oil filters. So this does all of that. And it does it in a way that it's, something can explode on you, and it also has an exhaust, so it collects any vapors or fumes, which makes it more healthy for employees. And it, that's just what it costs. We are lucky we can get this grant, so we can cut our cost in half.
Okay. And this is funded out of our match?
Out of resource recovery.
Okay, all right. So now we know. Yeah, it would have been great if all that detail had been in the packet, but we could have saved all this. But anyway, it sounds like this is going to be something that's going to be productive, may reduce some labor costs, and definitely is safer for our employees. And thank, thank you to whoever discovered this piece of equipment and brought it.
Mr. Mody says usual.
She's good. She's good. Okay, counsel, we'll now vote, Mr. Vina.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prater.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason, Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye, I always appreciate the innovation in y'all finding resources, thinking outside the box.
They're on it.
On it.
And Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes six to zero.
All right, we're on to our non-consent agenda, and item 19.
Consider approval of Resolution 2023-136R, setting a maximum proposed tax rate of 60.3 cents per 100 of taxable value, setting the dates of September 5, 2023, and September 19, 2023, to hold public hearings on the tax rate and declare an effective date.
Having a motion from Mr. Prater, seconded by Mr. Mendoza, Mr. Locke.
Thank you again, Mayor and City Council, John Locke, Finance Director. This item is to set the maximum proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2024, and we'll be going over the different definitions of the tax rates that come into play for next fiscal year. The first is the no-new revenue rate, and that's the tax rate that will produce the same amount of tax revenue as the previous fiscal year on properties that are taxed in both fiscal years. And that no-new revenue rate is 53.05 cents. Then you have the proposed rate, which is the same, with the proposed rate is the rate that was used to build the proposed budget, and it's the same as the current rate, the 60.3 cents. Then the voter approval rate, and that's the maximum rate allowed by law without an automatic election. And the voter approval rate is calculated by increasing the operations portion of the no-new revenue rate by three and a half percent. And you also add on to that any unused increment over the past three years. So the voter approval rate for fiscal year 24 is 68.87 cents. Next slide, please. This slide shows the property tax revenue that the city would generate with each one of those tax rates. We'll start with the proposed rate, which is the same as the current rate, the 60.3 cents. And the total property tax revenue, and this is net of the tax increment reinvestment zones, that would be generated is $49.8 million. This is for both the operations and the debt service component. If we were to go with the no-new revenue rate, the 53.05 cents, that would reduce the property tax revenue by just under $6 million. If we were to go up to the voter approval rate, that would increase the total property tax revenue by just over $7 million. And for fiscal year 24, every penny on the tax rate represents about $800,000. Next slide, please. Touch briefly on that property tax revenue is for both the operations and debt component. The operations component is 44.47 cents, and that funds items such as our core services. So that's your quality of life, your parks and recreation and the library, as well as public safety. It helps fund the council's strategic goals, investing in our employees to attract and retain a talented workforce. And for any special programs, all of that gets funded through the operations component of the tax rate. On the debt component, it's 15.83 cents, and it funds capital projects. So when, earlier today, council received an update about the fiscal year 2024 capital improvement program. A lot of those projects will be funded through the issuance of certificates of obligation, and those will be repaid with the tax component of the tax rate. The sum of those two is the 60.3 cents. Next slide, please. This slide shows the average value of a single-family home of, since 2020. And you can see from 2023 to fiscal year 2024, that the average home appraised value increased about 19% from $310,000 to $369,000. Next slide, please. Even though the average value increased to the $369,000 homestead properties are capped at the 10%, so you'll see that the average homestead value displayed on this slide is $338,000, since it did not grow the whole 19%. Its taxable value stopped at the 10% cap. And what this slide does show is it compares the average homestead value, the tax bill for fiscal '23 to fiscal year '24. And so the average value increased by just over $43,000. That average value is reduced by the homestead exemption that city council approved, so that brings the taxable value down by $15,000 to, in fiscal year '24, is $323,000. So when you apply that to the tax rate, the tax rate is the same in both tax years. The annual levy increased by $263. So if you look at that on a monthly basis, that is $22 a month of an increased tax bill. I also just wanted to touch on, it's not on this slide, but just touch on the amount of savings that the homestead exemption, as well as the senior and disabled exemption, has saved the citizens. In total, $182 million of taxable value has exempted in fiscal year '24, and that equates to $1.1 million in tax revenue that the city would otherwise have received. Next slide, please.
And let me mention one thing on the homestead exemption. So we also have had a campaign going on through our communications department on social, letting people know to look at their property tax bills and make sure that they have that homestead exemption. So just trying to make sure, since this is a newer thing for the city, that they really check that and be sure that we have that. Also, neighborhood meetings where we can, we're also letting people know so that they can make sure that they have that homestead exemption. The other thing that I wanted to mention that I didn't mention earlier is that Mr. Locke is also, when Mr. Baker asked about the other like equity kind of components that we're doing, Mr. Locke is also doing some videos. He and Ms. Surly have done some videos where those are going to be posted after tonight's workshop and so, or work session, so that those things can be on there for people to see how things are tying to the strategic initiatives, but then also how things are going in terms of how we're funding things, so that citizens understand the budget better. So that was another thing that I wanted to make sure and understand where we're going a step further as far as trying to inform our community.
Good. Thank you. Thank you.
This slide just provides a historical look at the city's tax rate, the total taxable value of the city, which you see from '23 to '24 increased from 8.1 billion to 9.6 billion. The next column over is the taxable value of the tax increment reinvestment zones. That gets removed from the total taxable value, and what is remaining is what the city is able to operate on. And that's what we use to fund the quality of life and the core services that we discussed earlier, as well as the debt service. And that taxable value increased from 7.1 billion to 8.4 billion. In total, it was 18%. Next slide, please. This is just a graphical representation of, that just shows the increase of the taxable value, and it breaks it out between the adjusted taxable value and the tourist taxable value. So it, so you can see the growth of both and graphically. And just as we touched on in the last slide, of a total $9.7 billion, 8.4 of that is for the taxable value that we're able to use for our core services, and 1.2 of that is for the tax increment reinvestment zone. Next slide, please. This slide shows the same information, only it shows the property tax revenue that we receive from that value. And it breaks it down into those three different components. You have the operations, which is in blue, the debt component, which is in orange, and the tourist component, which is in gray. So as we discussed on that previous slide, the tax revenue that the city will receive is a 36.8 million for operations, 13.1 million is for debt service, and the 7.3 million is for the tax increment reinvestment sense. Next slide, please. This slide compares the different growth components of the city. So it's showing the existing property appraisal growth and comparing that to new property taxable value added to the tax roll. So it's just the reappraisal growth of a taxable property that was already there compared to new property being added to the tax roll. And what it shows each year is the total growth in millions of dollars. So in fiscal year 2024, the total growth is $1.5 billion. Of that amount, 64% of that was from the existing property appraisal growth, so that was from a structure that was already here, and it got reappraised at a higher value. 36% was new value that was added. And so another way to look at that is of the services that the city is providing, that is how it's being funded. The difference between the new growth paying for it and the existing properties paying for it. There's also a chart there in the center that breaks that out from a three, five, and 10-year average. So you can tell it's about a 60/40 split, with the existing property appraisal growth being about 60% and the new property value being added being about 40%. Next slide, please. This slide just covers the process in setting the property tax rate. This evening, city council will set a maximum proposed tax rate, and this just creates the ceiling for the fiscal year 2024 tax rate. So when council actually sets a tax rate, and on September 19th, that tax rate can be equal to or lower than the tax rate that city council sets tonight. There will be two public hearings on the tax rate on September 5th and September 19th. Next slide, please. The recommendation is that city council set the maximum proposed tax rate at the current tax rate, which is 60.3 cents, and schedule the dates of September 5th and September 19th to hold public hearings on the tax rate. Do you have to answer any questions you may have?
Okay. And I need a motion and a second, which basically, if you'll help me, Mr. Gary, this is showing as a recommendation, but this is what's in the packet and agenda that we're asked to vote on, is to set the rate, and then of course, y'all schedule the public hearings that's needed. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Mr. Mendoza. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Discussion on the tax rate. Not how we're spending it, but on the tax rate.
No, but I'd like to make a comment about the slides and the presentation. They're so helpful, the way it's put together. I wish, I think I'm going to shrink these down and laminate them so I can carry around in my car and explain to people.
I shrunk and printed, yes.
But the budget presentation and this presentation and the slides are easy to understand, and they provide a lot of useful information. So thank you.
Thank you. Very, very well done. I think as evidenced by, we didn't have all that many questions, so that was good. Other comments? I will say, yes, that all of the information that's been presented has been very well done, and so I thank you for that. And we said, stick with the same one, and y'all are making it work. Thank you, Ms. Reyes and all directors. Anything else? Mr. Trevino, we will vote.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
And the motion passes six to zero.
All right. Onto item 20.
Consider approval of resolution 2023-137R approving an interlocal agreement with Texas State University that, one, provides a framework and processes under which the city and Texas State University will coordinate their transit systems and identify future Texas State University transit projects for funding by the city using federal transit funds; two, establishes initial transit projects and funding amounts; and three, establishes the general form of subrecipient funding agreement that will be used as each project is approved for funding, authorize the city manager or designate to execute the interlocal agreement on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Hold on. I'm just going to go ahead and abstain and step out due to my wife's employment at Texas State.
We'll make that notation.
Good evening, mayor and council. The day has finally come. For many years, this council, and many before you even, have supported the effort to provide a coordinated seamless transit system through strategic visioning. The item for your consideration is the next step in making that happen. This agreement allows the city to share federal funds with the university to provide for transit projects. As discussed in your June 6 work session presentation, the city has received approximately $23 million in federal transit grants, and our partner, the university, has generated at least $11 million of that funding by reporting its ridership to the National Transit Database. Once approved, the framework ILA will allow staff to begin programming the funding. Council will see funding agreements that will return for your consideration at a future date, and city staff will coordinate these efforts with the Federal Transit Administration. I'm pleased to welcome our Texas State partners to the meeting. With us today is John Root, Executive Director of Support Services, and Stephen Ereda, Director of Transportation. I also want to take a moment to just thank Mr. Binion, who has been the constant on this project, going through different phases, and so very, very proud of him and his efforts, as well as the leadership of Mr. Savasavila, Joe Pentalian, who was involved with it, and then also Ms. Moyer. So just really want to thank all of our team, and very, very excited to see this on the agenda today. Thank you. Turn it over to Mr. Binion.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes.
We'll do that.
Mayor, council, good evening. Pete Binion, Assistant Director of Public Works. We don't have any material to present tonight, but I'm here for questions, and so is the university, should you have them.
Okay. Well, we've received presentations and had discussions before, so where'd they go?
One abstaining, but I'll go for Mr. Scott.
Okay. Yes, and that means we can continue having this meeting right now, but nobody else gets to walk out of the room right now. Questions, concerns, comments? As someone who's been watching this for a really long time, this is a jump up and say yay moment. So I anticipate the future steps. This is, it's not the beginning, it's not the end, but it's an incredibly important intermediate step, so.
We need a motion and a second.
Did we not, did I not do that? Oh, okay. Yeah, oh, that's right. Mr. Prather left the room, and I missed it. Motion?
Oh, we need a small comment.
I need to get to motion and second because I was, I was delinquent in that, and I'll second it. Now, Mr. Gonzalez.
I think Lisa Pruitt and Melissa will be proud that this is finally going to go through.
And so will a whole lot of other council members who have discussed this over the years and look forward to it. So anyway, maybe not all, but some.
Some.
And I'm going back to 88, so it's a lot. Okay. Mr. Scott, we're voting on transit.
I'm ready.
Okay. Then let's vote, Mr. Trevino.
All righty. Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye. I love being a bobcat, but I also love public transportation, so I'll be keeping a close eye on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
About time. Aye.
Okay. The motion passes five to zero with one abstained and one abstained.
All righty. Onto item 21. Thank you all, thanks to all who have had a part in this, and thanks, thanks for coming in today. Thank you all. Item 21.
Appointment of city representatives to the Greater San Marcos Partnership and provide direction to staff.
Okay. Ms. Reyes.
Yes, this is, this item is just to affirm and confirm, see if council, who they want to put forward as your representatives on council, but then also if, from staff I currently serve. So they're just wanting to get that, get that confirmation, if there's anybody that wants to change or, and then to confirm my appointment.
And mine.
From staff, correct.
Because, because mayor and city manager are named by title, and then there's two council members.
Correct. And currently, that's Ms. Garza.
And Mr. Scott.
And Mr. Scott.
We're both on it.
Yes.
I wouldn't mind staying on it.
Okay.
Yeah, I would like to stay on it.
We have self-nominations. I need to ask if there are any other nominations. Did you say yes or no?
I don't know.
Okay.
Want to do it? No, I'll, the initial.
No, he's, he's saying he's good with.
Okay.
Okay. Then I will make a motion that our official representatives be Stephanie Reyes in her role as city manager, me in my role as mayor, and that we continue council members Scott and Garza. Looking for a second.
Second.
I'll give that one to Mr. Mendoza. We vote.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye. Thank you all.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
And Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item 22.
Appointing a representative to attend the business meeting at the Texas Municipal League Annual Conference in October.
And I, I think I misled, Mr. Trevino, this is not for representatives, because it's not like we're limiting attendance to one. one. This is the delegate, the voting delegate at the business meeting. I am willing to do that. It's at 3:30 one of the afternoons, and it's something that most people don't want to do. But if someone else would like to put their name forward, that's fine.
You've been doing it for a while.
Mayor, we're still going to be at the TMO.
I've done it when I forgot to put it on the agenda, and y'all were like, yeah, go ahead, we got a session to go attend, so.
No, no, that's fine. But we'll still be at the TMO.
Yeah, everybody goes. It's just who is the voting delegate at the business meeting? It's just at 3:30 in the afternoon, yeah.
Mayor gives us a scoop after, so.
Yeah, okay. So I will volunteer, and if we could confirm it, since no one's wanting to arm wrestle over this.
We kind of voluntold you.
Yeah, I'll take it.
Okay.
Like vote, I mean, I'll just thumbs up.
Yeah, I think we need to vote.
Oh, gotcha.
I self-nominated, so there we go. Do we need a formal motion and a second?
You can just go around.
A poll, okay.
Each go down the line.
Okay.
Sounds good, Mayor.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
I'm a yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Garza, Gonzalez, Mendoza.
Aye.
Prather.
Yes.
Scott.
Aye.
And Mr. Gleason. Motion passes six to zero.
All right, continuing on, we are to item 23 already.
Discuss and consider appointments to fill vacancies on the following boards and commissions and provide direction to staff. A historical preservation committee, B library board, C senior citizen advisory committee, D zoning board of adjustments.
I have a nomination, I guess, that's.
Okay, if we could go in order, let's do historic preservation first. Would that be your nomination?
Yes, ma'am, it'd be Mr. Jason Rebus.
Okay. Are there other nominations for the Historic Preservation Commission?
Did we just get one application for each one?
Yes, ma'am.
I think so. Did we have any? We kind of exhausted the list back in February, didn't we?
Some of them were also appointed to another board that volunteered on this one, so they probably were on another board, and so, yes.
Okay, and there was social media out?
Yes.
Saying we need to.
We have the list, we have the list out there, yes, ma'am.
Volunteers, okay. So let's just go on through library board. Is there a nominee?
Dewana Goldstone.
All right. And for the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee?
Megan Stiller.
And for Zoning Board of Adjustments and Appeals?
Mr. William Moore.
Okay. I will say that I was impressed by these folks. I couldn't tell you which characteristic fits which one at this moment, but I was glad to see these applications, so diversity. I don't know any of these people, I'm just going with what they put on their application. So we have one nominee for each, so I believe we can cover this in one motion, correct, Mr. Gary, Ms. Trevino? Okay, all righty.
Okay, Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason, Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes six to zero.
All right. And now we are to at 7:14. I didn't miss anything this time, did I? You know how sometimes I skip over when we're, you know, about to get out early? Okay, we are now to our question and answer session with press and public, and let me see who signed up. The gentleman has left, and did Ms. Copeland ever join us?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then, Mr. Baker, three minutes is yours. Two, three minutes. Is that working?
Yeah, now it is.
Okay.
Right, as it relates to the habitat conservation plan, I was kind of surprised when he was talking about how low the water is. None of you asked why is that, right? We all kind of assume, oh, is it just the rain? But to what extent, and again, I'm kind of shocked nobody asks this, to what extent is development and overpumping resulting in our low water? To the point now where graduates, and I just made a post about this today, can't even enjoy their rite of passage of doing backflips and stuff into the river because it's so shallow, right? So it'd be great for you all to follow up with them and ask from a recreation management standpoint, and for the health of, again, these endangered species, what are we doing as a body that is potentially impacting this? Or are regional water partners, as the mayor sits on those boards and committees more often than not, I just kind of assume you sit on most of them, right? So we need to figure that out. You all keep approving new development, trying to bring in heavy industrial, large sizes. We just had to put out two wildfires, like in our backyard, right? So to what extent are we really preserving water, caring about it, and thinking about these long-term impacts and growth? As it relates to the budget, you know, there was mention of the homestead exemption. A few months ago, it was brought to your attention that specifically in the Dunbar neighborhood, we're pursuing national historic designation for certain areas in there, and the consultant for that project mentioned how helpful it would be to do those local historic designations as well. Have any of you all brought forward that agenda item? Because I asked and hoped and even suggested that the consultant knows how to work with this and said they want to talk to you all about it. One of you, just two of you, needs to put it on the agenda to, again, pursue local historic designations to help our community members age in place, right? That's what this is about. Also, the mention of these classes about the homestead exemption that Mr. Locke is going to do, that sounds awesome. That's exactly the kind of community empowerment we need to do. Will those classes and videos also be provided in Spanish? Can we also do those at the library as like a little workshop for everybody to make sure that they have that paperwork and understand the process? Even as somebody fluent in political bureaucracy, it's really difficult for me to even look at that stuff. And if I could just finish my last question.
Sure.
Again, to no surprise, we have very few applicants for these really important boards and commissions. I made the recommendation when I was still on council that we consider paying people, specifically citizen members of these boards and committees, to serve. I think that's really indicative of why you all are struggling to find good and a diverse set of applicants for these boards and committees. It's budget time, now is the time to figure out how much that would cost. Even do some rudimentary numbers would be really helpful to see if that's worthwhile investing in, especially from a diversity, equity, and inclusion standpoint. So thank you very much.
Okay, I need to ask you a question, please. Were you talking about local historic recognition?
Local historic.
Because there's the national, and then there's the state, and then there is a local. Is that what you're asking about?
Yes, correct.
Okay. The Historic Preservation Commission was working on that a while back, and I remember speaking a little directly to one of the members, saying, you guys need to get out as the commission and help and talk to the neighbors, talk to people. We know somewhat about a lot of the homes do the historic resources survey. I think you guys need to get out and beat the bushes. It didn't go anywhere.
Right, but that's because they're unpaid members of the public, right?
Mr. Baker, your turn to speak is over.
Okay, well, you asked me some questions.
And because they were expecting staff to do everything. And I said, no, one of the reasons why we have commission members is you're in the community. And so I don't know what the current, I don't know what the current situation is with the Historic Preservation Commission, but I think it's been a couple of years. Here comes Ms. Hernandez, I bet she knows as to what the current status of that is.
If I can actually just jump in real quick, Mayor, just to let Mr. Baker know, I am in the process right now of working with the historical commission, putting some kind of recognition for Mr. Flores, who was our first Hispanic mayor in town, who was from Guadalupe Street. So we are working on something like that, sir. We're not ignoring it, but we are trying to designate.
This is for.
For the local designation, is it not?
Yeah, this is for a physical.
Oh, we are, we're trying to get something, yes, ma'am. To the marker that goes for it.
Yes, and I'll tell you that I heard bits and pieces of the questions, because it was hard to hear in the back, but why are we not more proactive in designating local landmarks, I think is one of the questions I heard.
HPC had long conversations on this about two or three years ago.
The state took away our ability to proactively designate. It has to be requested by a property owner for local landmarks.
Oh, the idea was to go out and talk to people and get them to come in and apply for it.
Got you, okay. I will anticipate that that'll be part of the historic preservation plan that we are hopefully going to have an RFP on the street for very soon.
Okay, but we have the process now.
There is a process, yes, ma'am.
And if my home were to qualify, it wouldn't, but if it did, I could come down, fill out the paperwork, somebody's got to check all that other stuff, and then it goes through the HPC. Does that come to council? We haven't done one in a long time.
Yes, landmarks do, landmarks and districts. It's like zoning, it's a zoning overlay.
Okay. Thank you, I'm glad you're working on that. I.
And if I misunderstood the question, I'll apologize for that.
No, I guess maybe I'll put this on a future agenda, because I'm going to be rude and just say it, we don't have to wait for that plan or whatever to start doing this. And I'm curious as to why it dropped two or three years ago. I don't know what happened, or maybe it didn't, maybe just nobody ever turned one in. But there's businesses and homes that would qualify, and so, anyway, I'll, if I need to, if HPC's working on it actively, then I'll maybe let them do it. Otherwise, I'll put it on our agenda to have a discussion about this.
And I'm not familiar with any active programs to approach the community, with the exception of we received some grant funding for national designation, but that's not local.
Right, yeah, and we're working on that one.
So the two, as far as the homestead exemption, so there's two different things. So there's a campaign that communications is doing to tell people, hey, homestead exemptions, there will be information, and usually, you know, I'll confirm as Surly's listening to me, but normally when we put stuff out, we do put it out in English and Spanish, and so we will be sharing that information out. So there's not classes Mr. Locke is going to be doing, he's going to do videos, and so those will then be posted on the website in regard to more information about the budget and about the strategic plan and the different goals that are within the budget and how those connect, so.
That's translated in Spanish.
So that is not translated in Spanish. That's just not, I mean, when it's, you know, videos, of course, there's closed captioning and things people can do sometimes to still get things translated to Spanish, but it may not be the exact translation, you know, I know it's not necessarily the same thing. So that's something we can endeavor for, but this is new, just to even have this, we haven't had this in the past, so we're taking a step forward in terms of at least trying to do some workshops, some videos.
But if you've got the videos, and, yeah, if we can't get that in Spanish, at least what they said could be translated in Spanish and be provided with text, as a separate item, but just next, click here for the video and click here for the.
And I just want to remind you, we're here to answer kind of the questions, but now we're getting into direction on specific policy issues. So, you know, I think she answered it, and of course, you can take into consideration the comments.
Okay.
There was a third question about paying people to serve the community, why are you doing it?
With cheap.
Well, it's a discretion of the mayor, but of course, we're beyond the three minutes, but it's your discretion, of course.
There hasn't been anyone to take that forward. We can talk later why, but it has not continued. Anything else? Ms. Trevino, are we at adjournment?
Yes, ma'am.
I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by, I'll second it. Let's go around the table and see who wants to go home.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.